Good evening and welcome to the March 1st, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person. We require that all unvaccinated in-person attendees wear masks consistent with Contra Costa County health orders. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak on an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications", and this is for comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communications should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook and will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. We will ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raise hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you're attending in person, please complete a yellow speaker identification card, they're in the back of the room, and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. The lectern is right there. Wait your turn and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note that in-person public comments will be taken before any remote public comments. Also, please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with City Council policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are: The ID is 880-5811-1954, and the passcode is 193447. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, you can visit the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; Cable Broadcast, Comcast Channel 28 Incorporated in Walnut Creek; Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 1028, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You could also livestream online on the city's website. At this time, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
I'm here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Potem Silva?
Here.
And Mayor Francois?
I'm here. Next on the agenda is the oath of office to our newly appointed commissioners. It looks like we, everyone is here as well as several family members, so welcome. At this time, I invite our newest commissioners to come up to the front of the dais so that our city clerk can administer the oath of office, and upon the conclusion of the oath, I would invite our commissioners to the lectern to introduce themselves and say a few words.
Stand like in a line.
Semi-circle?
We'll do the picture at the end. So if you can all please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Jill Dresser.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter
Congratulations. So we'll take a group picture.
Photo op? Did someone say photo op? So if you'd like, please just introduce yourself. You don't have to do a State of the Union tonight, but just we'd like to know who you are, how long you've lived in the city, and what caused you to apply for commission. Just come to the lectern right here.
Good evening. I'm Jill Dresser. My husband Bruce and I, who's here, have lived in Walnut Creek for 35 years. I want to thank the City Council, past and present, for the support of the arts in Walnut Creek, especially the visual arts. I've been a longtime docent at the Bedford Gallery, and I urge everyone to see the latest show, Forced to Flee. It is a beautiful, bold, and deeply thoughtful show. If you ask me where to go to see a great collection of public art in Walnut Creek, I'd send you to the Walnut Creek Library. Almost every nook and cranny holds a piece of art. My favorite pieces can be found in the wall in the children's section, in the east entrance spanning two stories full of books in shades of gray, and at the north stairwell with bottles floating and spiraling above all who enter. Be curious and go out and find some art in Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Evening. Jason Cook, Parks, Rec, and Open Space Commission. And I'm a lifelong Walnut Creek resident, attended the local schools, went to Los Lomas, my wife went to Northgate, longtime runner and just outdoor enthusiast, and really wanted an opportunity to give back to the traditions of Walnut Creek and all the great things that parks and recs and open space have done. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Needing, and I'm joined here by the one-year-old over there, Penelope, and my three-year-old daughter, Isabel, and I can't forget my husband, Adam. I am very honored to be chosen to be on the planning commission, so thank you. My husband and I made a very intentional choice that this be the home of our very first home that we purchased, which I, I'm an immigrant, I was born in Peru, and so for me, housing is extremely important. It's a privilege to be able to own a home and to be able to pass that down to those two little girls over there. So I thank you for letting me serve.
Thank you, Pamela. If I could ask our commissioners, we'd like to see the, if you wouldn't mind just lining up against the wall there and wait your turn. I appreciate that. Then we can see your faces.
Hello, everyone. I'm Heather Wilkinson, and I'm thrilled to have been appointed to the Contra Costa County Library Commission. I am relatively new to Walnut Creek, but my husband and I love it here, and I'm really thrilled to be able to get a little bit more involved.
I'm Rob Race, and I've been in Walnut Creek from '87 to '93. Always wanted to come back to Walnut Creek for retirement, and so we came back in 2019, a few years before retirement, but the goal is to live and serve Walnut Creek in my retirement age, and this is the first step in doing that on the Transportation Commission. And I'm honored that you chose me to be on the commission. I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I'm Bernie Mark. I've been here since 1993. I was born and raised in San Francisco. I lived in Oakland for eight years, and Walnut Creek is the best place I've lived in. Anyway, I've been, I'm on the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
My name is Phil Newsome. I'm honored to be, I've been appointed to the Design Review Commission. I've lived out here with my wife Peggy for about, I think it's about 19 years now. Lived in the Bay Area my whole life. I grew up in San Francisco. And I just wanted to find a way to give back. I'm an architect. I have a business in town, so it's just an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Hi, good evening. Buenos noches. I'm Sarah Baltazar, and really excited and honored to be here tonight as a new commissioner to the arts team. I've been in Walnut Creek for the last eight years, my mom the last 20. I've lived all across California and the East Coast, and I'm really excited to think about creativity and all of the nuances in that word in terms of how we might, the creativity, to reject the past or change the status quo and seek new potential. And I'm really excited to do that with all of you and the city of Walnut Creek.
Welcome, Sarah. On behalf of the entire council, I want to welcome you formally. I want to thank you for your service to the community. We look forward to working with all of you, and you're going to have a lot of fun. So, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? And I would like to pull Consent Calendar Item 2C on the Lindsay Wildlife Museum.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar items.
Let me ask for a public comment first, but then I would love that motion. So, no one, no council wants to pull an item other than 2C, and Madam Clerk, if any member of the public would like to speak to an item on the consent calendar, please raise your hand or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. Obviously, if you're in the chamber, please line up next to the podium.
No in-person public comments, but we do have a speaker on Zoom. We'll go ahead and bring in BG.
Hi, this is Barbara Guinness. I just had a question on Consent Calendar 2E. Talks about the city manager authorizing capital lease for the golf course. Now, is this a normal thing even though the golf course is self-funded? I don't know, maybe you can't answer questions here, but that was my question.
Ms. Guinness, we appreciate you raising that question. We'll ask the city manager or arts director to answer that before we take action on the item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And no additional public comment.
Mr. Buckshai, would you mind, please, responding to Ms. Guinness's question?
Sure. Dan Buckshai, City Manager. Yes, the Boundary Oak Golf Course is an enterprise fund, which means it's self-sustaining based upon the fees and other service charges. That said, the City Council has ultimate jurisdiction over the budget as it reports up through me, and I have oversight for its operations. So, yes, it does fully fall within our jurisdiction this evening.
So, it doesn't come from the city general fund or budget. It's separately funded, but as a matter of transparency and open government, we bring it to the council for authorization by the council for any expenditures?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now?
Please. How's your time?
Move to adopt Consent Calendar Items 2A and B and D, E, F, G, H.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 2C is the, a lease agreement with the Lindsay Wildlife Museum, and as many of you may or may not know, since 1955, the Lindsay Wildlife Museum has been an integral part of the Walnut Creek community. As most Walnut Creek residents are likely aware, is the Lindsay Wildlife Experience is a renowned museum and wildlife rehabilitation center. It was the first wildlife hospital established in the United States. It's a treasured community resource, a popular destination for families and those interested in wildlife in the Bay Area. And Lindsay has been a key city partner and tenant of the cities for the last 30 years. This new lease agreement that we'll be taking action on tonight will extend the city's partnership with Lindsay for up to 50 more years. This new lease will allow the Lindsay to continue to offer its nationally recognized educational programs and wildlife rehabilitation services to Walnut Creek residents and beyond. We want to, the council collectively wants to thank the Lindsay board and staff for the work they do for our wildlife and for our residents. And we're joined tonight by Board President Janet Kozlowski, who's here to make some remarks on behalf of Lindsay Wildlife. Welcome.
Good evening. Well, I just want to say thank you. There's a few people I would like to call out that worked for years on this lease. So, Emeline, and Heather, and then my board and my committee, thank you very much. This has been long in the process. However, this partnership has created the foundation to really carry out Lindsay's mission, which is to connect people to wildlife. By staying at First Street, we now can create more First together and really grow in the city. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate this, and I welcome everybody to come visit us. There's great animals, and you are welcome for a private tour.
Thank you, Ms. Kozlowski. Any, would any of my colleagues like to make any remarks? Okay, I'll go ahead and move, thank you for coming. Thank you for your board members for coming and for all you're doing for our community. I'd like to move to approve Agenda Item 2C.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Silva?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Francois, I would just Sorry, I would just note for the record that both of those last two motions included the amendments on the dais.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mattis. Yes, sir. And just for clarification, those were amendments to, it was 2C and 2D. Okay. Next on the agenda is public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the items to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated this time for public communications. Additional time for public communications will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. If any member of the public wishes to provide public comments at this time, please raise your hand or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. And for those who desire to provide public comment in the chambers, please line up behind the lectern as Mr. Bennett is doing. At this time, I will note that the time is 6:23, and we will take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 6:53, and then the remainder of such comments at the end of the open session. And Mr. Bennett, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Pete Bennett. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek for over 44 years. Quite a story, but I'm going to leave that off the table. Didn't really think the folks from Ukraine would show up tonight, but here's what I know. That's part of my story, but I'm not going to delve into it. It's, you don't know that I appeared on TV around the world many times. And I've been through quite a story. I'm not surprised with what I'm seeing in Russia. I've studied both countries for years because of things that I've gone through. And when I watch what's unfolding, it's completely endlessly tragic. Does anybody have, you know, back in the draft, you know, back in Vietnam? That bothered the hell out of me. You know, I've talked about my friend's son out here. James Coon, by the way, killed in Iraq, 2007. And what we have is a tragedy unfolding, and I don't know if we can stop this guy. I think, personally, I think we could, but it's going to change the landscape of the world. Believe me, I know. I have family that goes back to Robert McNamara, President Kennedy, King of England. I've seen it all. I've read all my family history. I find it very fascinating that Lord Cobbled is my godfather. He created Borneo. He created Borneo and turned it into Malaysia and Singapore and all that. He only answers to the Queen. I've been interviewed by Scotland Yard Her Majesty's Service 10 years ago. My life hasn't gotten better, though. You all know that by now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker?
Hi, all. Thank you very much for having us over. My name is Ivar Sirava. I am, I live in Concord, and my entire family, except my mom, are, is over there. And my entire family is in, they live in different cities. I have a few nephew, a few nephews. They are in the army right now. So, but that's, that's their honor to serve, to serve Ukraine. And, you know, every, every call that we have, they're saying goodbye. We're all saying goodbye, really, to all of our friends. And all of the Ukrainian community here and people from, from other countries who are close, have some, someone in Ukraine, or they're actually supporting us a lot, too. We don't sleep. We don't sleep from 23rd of February from 7:00 PM. I was watching the news, and I saw that the war, the war is happening. But I want to point out that, you know, some people are saying that Russia is going to rise up. No, it's never going to happen. And I'll just, I'll just read the messages that, you know, my already ex-friend, and I always thought that he was, he was a normal human being, and he lives here. And, you know, I posted something, and he kind of didn't, couldn't understand. And then I'm asking him a question, "Are you pro-Putin?" And he goes like, "Why are you asking?" I'm like, "I'm just curious. I really want to know." And he goes like, "I'm pro-business. I'm American citizen, and my main concern is my family. He doesn't have kids." I'm like, "Okay, so if, even when kids are dying over there in Ukraine, and this is the actual genocide that's happening in Ukraine right now, you don't care?" And the response, it just killed me yesterday. I could not do anything at all. He says, "Kids are, kids are dying every day as well as born." So, and he is actually Russian-born. He is originally from Moscow. So, we have to do, there are a couple of action items.
That was your two minutes. Thank you, though. I appreciate your comments. It's only two minutes for public comments. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Olga Zaychikova. I've been Walnut Creek resident for 22 years. And even though I lived here for 22 years, my entire family is back in Ukraine. My parents, my brother, my niece, my nephew, my two grand nephews, my cousins. As we speak right now, Russia bombs peaceful people, peaceful cities. They shot rocket at the Ukrainian TV station in Kiev, place where my cousin works. Though, when my friends asking how your, your family is doing, how your parents doing, I cannot say they're okay. I can say they're alive for now. Every morning I wake up, I'm thinking, "Are they still alive?" Every evening when I go to bed, I'm calling, I'm asking, "Are you still alive?" So, I'm here just to spread awareness that this war is closer than you think. We have a large community here in Walnut Creek Ukrainian community. We have Ukrainian schools in San Francisco. My kids attending Ukrainian schools. My kids used to play with Ukrainian kids in Ukraine that live in Kharkiv. And you probably know on the news that Kharkiv been heavily bombed in the past two days. Peaceful cities, peaceful people that really just kids, kids dying there. So, I'm here just to spread this awareness. Thank you, United States, for the help that you providing, support that you providing. We're probably going to have some refugees coming over here, and maybe City of Walnut Creek can do something to help as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, everyone. My name is Valentina Butanka. I live in Concord. I moved here eight years ago, so home, my family are there in Ukraine right now. My parents are behind me. I was lucky enough to move them here last year. So, the main concern we have right now in Ukraine to get our family safe. Before I got to emotional, the message that I wanted to, guys, to you, to be aware and spread with your friends, it's like, "We need shelter, Ukrainian sky. We need iron dome." If you know, if you don't know, this, all this information, you can look up. We just want the protection for our families. I'm originally from Chernihiv. It's northern city of Ukraine. The one that actually standing in between a state, like capital, Syria, Kiev, and Belarusian, Russian, people coming and invading from all these parts, our country. So, I just want you guys to be aware that's a lot of Ukrainians over here. My husband, he's Russian. Our family, we're like multinational. We're citizens of United States right now. But our hearts are over there. Our families are over there. Our, my nephew, my seven-months nephew, my brother, his wife, they are there. My friends, they're all there right now, hiding from bombs and shooting. So, you know, being too far away, it's like, I know from my own experience, where you don't have anyone over there. You're like, you get an emotional maybe for one day. You think about that, and then you just lay down to sleep, and next day you do your own stuff. For the last seven days, we, we don't sleep. That's the only thing what we like, keep calling our families and keep asking, "If you're okay, if you're okay, are you still alive? How you doing?" And we can do this every single day. I call my friends. I call my classmates. I call everybody who I know over there, from Chernihiv, from Kharkiv, from Kiev, from different cities. So, just, guys, be aware, spread the word. We need support. We need all your support that we have, you have here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sergei Prokhov. I came to Walnut Creek in 2016. I came here from a city in South Ukraine called Kherson. And yesterday, my street, where I lived, where I went to school, was shot by Russian artillery. And fighting and shooting continues. And Putin tells that he came to rescue people like me who has Russian or mixed on the street. And I want to tell that this is a lie. Since fall of Soviet Union in Ukraine, we had six presidents elected democratically in different elections. At the same time, Russia had three presidents, and one of them was Putin, who is in charge like for 21 years now. So, the real reason he came into Ukraine, he feels threatened. He feels threatened about our democracy, which is still young, which has still problems, but we are trying our best to do it. And if we will succeed, he will threaten by it. And he tries to destroy us. So, we need help. We need help to protect our young democracy. We need help to protect our children, our people, our cities, our town. Any help you can give us would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Evgeny Romanko. I'm also of Ukrainian descent. I moved to Walnut Creek in 2005, never left the same zip code. I love the city. I love my neighbors. I love everything here, and so does my family. And if you see somebody with cold eyes and new lines, you never, you didn't see last week, you might be sure, you see Ukrainians these days. We are not okay. The whole world is not okay. And what I do these days, how I spend my days, I call my family. My family live in a small town, not next to Kiev, but basically every day, a siren goes off. And my mom is 82, my dad is 85. They're supposed to go to the bomb shelter in the basement of the apartment building. They don't go. They're old people. They just can't move it fast. I barely convince them to sit in the hallway. So, if a shell goes through the window, they won't get hit. So, that's how we spend our days these days. That's what I do. And basically, they lived through the war as kids. Ukraine was occupied by Nazis in Second World War. I don't know what the world did to deserve, what our parents did to deserve this. But I just wanted to share my personal perspective and tell, no, we're not okay. The whole world is okay. What the United States is doing is great. What the whole world is doing, the level of support is unimaginable. But is it still enough to stop this maniac? I don't know. I think we need to do more. I think the world needs to do more. Well, I guess I'm just give, up the floor to the next speaker. Thank you so much. Thank you for support.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alexey Chukov. I drove here all the way from Oakley to support your constituents here in Walnut Creek. Really, because, you know, at this moment, when, when I saw in the news, when the tower, the TV tower in the city of Kiev was falling down right next to the, one of the biggest Holocaust memorials in Eastern Europe, Babiyar, right next to it. It's literally within like walking distance. The family of five was, was hit in a blast and died in one step second. They were walking to put the flowers at the memorial, because what's happening right now, ladies and gentlemen, it's not war. War started eight years ago, when Mr. Putin came and exiled Crimea, took over Donbass. Six days ago, genocide started. You know, with only two minutes to come and make the statement, I want you, I want you to really concentrate on two words, "Never again." Eighty years ago, we use those words, very powerful words, that today, for all these people right here, feel completely meaningless. Meaningless because world is watching, but unfortunately, we are doing only half measures. We're not willing to do what it takes to stop this madness, and we all can do so much more. So, I urge you, please, as public officials, please spread the word. Please ask, if you can, our government to do more and just be with these people, hear them. They have many, many stories, and they matter today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alexander Herbenko. I am here for six months. I have moved here last July. I work for an IT company, but I'm a former military. I quit military service in 2017 after 12 years of service. And now, I am like, I, I'm here just to express my, I don't know, I, there's nothing I can do. I have a family over here, and my relatives over there. I cannot join American Army because I'm on L-1 visa, and I cannot support Ukraine from American side. I cannot return to Ukraine because my family will, they will not, they will not have a place to live. So, they will just stay on the street. So, this is like, I don't know. It's a terrible situation, and our, we have mobilized over 100,000 people, and they don't have helmets. They don't have nothing. So, they're just fighting with knives. And if you can, any support will be highly appreciated. Also, as for my relatives, I was trying for 18 months to get visas, but due to the COVID situations, all the appointments are rejected. So, now, like, my relatives are in Kiev, and they cannot go even to Poland. And I'm not talking about even going to U, to US. So, I hope they can make it and go to Poland, but what, what else? I cannot invite them here. And in order to get an appointment over there, it's like, the last one is December 12th, how they will live over there. So, if you can help somehow, and just also, and also, like Ukrainians who are over here, recently, L-2 visa holders has received a work permit just like this. But in order to achieve it, we need to move out from US and apply once again, to crow the border once again, because of the bureaucracy, and it will take, if you want to go an official way, it will take 10 or 12 months. So, also, we cannot support economy. We cannot support our families. We cannot, we cannot get our kids into the kindergarten. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dmitry Gali. I moved to United States in 2016, and I actually just moved with my wife and two of my kids. Actually, one kid and another one was just joined, joined us a month ago, and we moved here in December. My, my wife is American, and my kids are half Ukrainian. My kids have been, my first one was born two and a half years ago. And I have entire immediate family back in Ukraine, and they didn't have a chance even to, to meet each other because of the COVID, because of everything. So, it's really, it's really hard to make those Skype calls, not knowing that it's, it could be the last time they could see each other, and they never even met in person. Sorry for this. So, what I'm trying to, to ask everyone, like, you, what I'm trying to ask Americans, American government, American country, American president, is just basically join to, or like add to, to what my just Ukrainian fellow citizens have, have mentioned, that it's, it's been ongoing for, for eight years. And all we've been hearing is just sanctions and everything. And they, there were no sanctions over these last eight years. And finally, war starts, and they start putting sanctions. But it's too late already for economic sanctions. We need military power. You are afraid to start the World War III, it's understandable. Provide us as much as possible, offensive weapons, defensive weapons, anything that can protect every single soldier, that every single human being in Ukraine, because this is not fair, and we need entire world to support us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Svetlana Bradburg. And I'm piano teacher here in Pleasant Hill. I moved here from Belarus 20, almost 22 years ago. But I'm represented today my friend, who lives in Chernigov, what lady was also talking. In Chernigov, it's a Plazdarm from Russian military army going to the Kiev. It's very close by. So, they living constantly under the rockets, under the bombing, under the ten coming, and they basically living in basement, under apartments. And they leaving, the lots of them, they sleeping in some kind of shell when they used to have some kind of jar, jar with pickling stuff, what they keeping during winter. So, they put some clothes they living. And the husbands, their young girl, they are in the army right now, they volunteering. They went to Kiev. They staying to Chernigov to fight with, almost with no guns, but what they making some kind of molotov cocktail. And I just want to tell, so I, the first time for this six day, I could not sleep also because she's my best, best friend. And she saw me this, and she took me, I mean, she opens this WhatsApp camera, and I saw this, it's a small, small place with lots of, lots of people. But what's hurt my heart, so I could not live today, I could not breathe today, only crying. As a one young girl, 22, 23 years old, holding like this little child, three months. It's no food because it's a past stress, she lost, she lost her breast milk. And people, it's so united. They going, when it's not bombing, no siren. They asking everybody in the neighborhood, "Who has the milk? Who has the formula?" "We need to." And they coming, and they running, because it's nothing, no stores, no open. And they going and saying this. This is just one what hit me so much. And my friend always asking me, "Why?" I am piano teacher. I am not, why I should go through this life? I mean, she's a violin teacher.
Okay, you're, you're two minutes up. Thank you for your comments. So, we appreciate that. Next speaker?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My English is limited, but I'm going to speak from my heart. My name is Julia Kosivchuk. I'm from western part of Ukraine. I live in Castro Valley. I'm a karate and Jiu-Jitsu instructor. And today, I taught a class, teaching little kids how to be strong, how to protect their own rights, how to fight back if they have to. In Ukraine, we don't have that option right now. You know what's going on? They're just stopping cars and killing people, just like that. Kids, little kids, killing kids. Your kid is just playing right now with their favorite toy. They smiling at you, saying, "Hey, daddy, I love you. Mama, I love you." Next second, their dad. We need to shelter this guy for Ukraine, because tomorrow, those kids will not be smiling. They will not be playing with you guys. It can happen. It can happen to anybody, any country, you understand what I mean? I am a parent, I am a mom. My older kid, I am paying her to help me, for my karate students, to teach them to be strong, Americans, Japanese, Chinese kids, all over the world, I have, all the nationalities. It doesn't matter, we're all human being. I love my students, I love my kids, and my older daughter today, she said, mom, you're paying me, because I'm helping you, but you know what? We're going to save that money and give it to Ukrainian refugees, because they just, like my sister yesterday, they, she flew, sorry, to Romania, on the border with my hometown, with nothing, nothing. Now, just imagine, living in a peaceful world, you have all the goods, everything is good, everything is good, right? You can go and have fun with your friends at the coffee shop, and all of a sudden, it stops.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Rostus Lavuchko. I am a data scientist at a larger corporation here, and I'm Ukrainian, and as you can imagine, I'm sharing my days swinging from anger to guilt, guilt for not being there with my people, not being able to help, and I'm trying to do what I can, what I can do, and what I'm calling everybody around me, is to, yes, we mentioned sanctions, sanctions are important when they are real. So one of the sanctions is not targeted, I mean, every time Russia was given targeted sanctions, it survived, after two, three years, it started attacking somebody again, look up history, last thirty years, it started five wars. So I just pressed the leadership of my company, multi-billion dollar company, to admit that they stop producing any commercial goods in Russia. They had an office in Moscow, they are not producing any commercial goods in Russia, they stopped getting any services out of Russia, and I'd like to think that maybe my pressure helped them to take that decision. So I am calling to everybody who is working with any company present, represented in Russia, buying any goods from Russia, stop. Any business with Russia, any business as usual that involves Russian goods needs to be stopped, and if it's morality reasons are not enough, because all those taxes fund bombs that fall on our cities right now and kill our kids right now. But if morality reasons are not good enough, that you can take into account that everybody is exiting Russia as fast as they can now, even big oil. And the faster you drop it, the faster you drop any connection you have with Russia, the more money you're going to save in the long time. But if you do it now, not because of money, but because of taking a stance, you will save your face. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We're coming up on our thirty-minute window for public communications. I noticed we have two members on Zoom that look like they would like to speak, so Jim Frey and Barbara Guinness will be called, and then we're going to close public communications. You fill out a yellow speaker card in the back of the room.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Frey.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to address the city council once again. My name is Jim Frey, and I live in Walnut Creek. I'm a member of the Save Seven Hills Ranch organization. We continue to grow our membership and gain more signatures on our petition to stop the speaker development project at Seven Hills Ranch. We remain firmly against this project. The reasons are numerous, not the least of which is, it does not conform to the goals of Walnut Creek, to maintain green spaces, keep our mature trees, and continue to manage our traffic, especially on Ignacio Valley Road. I also note that this project does not add new homes to Walnut Creek, it does not contribute to achieve SB nine housing requirements. This project's customer, its end user, is a relatively high net worth individual who can afford a two-bedroom apartment that has a price tag of about $2 million in a continuing care retirement community, as defined by the state. Clearly, this is not for a first-time home buyer. Further, this project will increase the demand for electric power and water on our system that is already stretched. The Speaker Development Company has already been putting out advertisements that have named the development and describe it as, quote, "coming to Walnut Creek." This development project, that clearly goes against the general plan, has not been approved by the county, nor to our knowledge has anyone in our city and county government come out in support of it. On behalf of Save Seven Hills Ranch, more than 3,000 people who have signed our petition, and many more people who have voiced their opposition to the project, we are asking that the city council continue to convey our opposition to the project to the county supervisors. Thank you very much for the time to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Frey. We're going to call Ms. Guinness, and then we have one speaker in the chambers, and then that will be it for public communications until the end of our meeting, if any, we will have exhausted our thirty minutes. So Ms. Guinness, you have the floor.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, and I've been a Walnut Creek resident since 1996. I just wanted to say with all the Ukrainian people that spoke, you know, my thoughts are with you, and me and my family hope that we can do something to help you. I wanted to speak about a different subject today, though. I, I wanted to thank Council, Councilman Wilk, for setting up the booth at Shadlands Farmers' Ranch, or, yeah, Farmers Market, I'm sorry, I have ranch on the mind. Anyway, it was a pleasure to speak to him last Saturday, and I like that he came to the Shadlands Farmers Market, as I don't really like to go downtown Walnut Creek unless I need to. So anyway, thank you very much, Councilman Wilk. Also, I've attached, which a lot of people probably won't see, but I, I know the council will see, and the mayor, I've attached several pictures I took in the last few days in southwest Lime Ridge. These pictures are native plants and grasses that are blooming right there, and they surround the Timberleaf and Perezo trails. I don't recall seeing this many flowers here, this year, compared to other years, and I've lived here since ninety-six. Also, I would compare to the rest of Lime Ridge, which I know real well, and there are really a lot more flowers in this particular area. I haven't seen the numbers that I've seen this year. I guess the rain that we got in the fall and late last year really helped. So I encourage any of you that live in the area to just take a hike up the Timberleaf and Perezo Trail area, and look for the wildflowers, you'll, you'll really enjoy it. Also, there's a large stand of chaparral in the Timberleaf and Perezo Trail area. It, it is, is home for all kinds of different types of wildlife, including rare and threatened species such as the Alameda whipsnake and Mount Diablo horned lizard. I think when you look at the, all these pictures and think about those animals, or reptiles, and other creatures, putting a high-speed bike flow trail doesn't seem to be appropriate. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. And our last speaker during public communications, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Adina, and I wanted to say I stand with Ukraine and peace to you all. And then, city council, thank you for being here and for serving, and my issue also is the Heather Farms in the area, the Diablo Hills. I lived in twenty years in Walnut Creek, then twenty years out in Danville, and I'm back to Walnut Creek, I'm a retired school teacher. And I grew up in Antioch, you know, and my father was on the, the water board, and we tried to fight, or he tried to fight, you know, the Sino developments, and we all know where that went, you know, with the, with the parking, and with, with the roads, and with the not enough parks, and it's just, it can be a mess out there, it's, it's shameful. And I find my, my Walnut Creek, that I used to come over to as a kid, I'm extremely disappointed that this has been allowed, with this development. The city's turning into a high-rise town, I'm afraid it's going to be a foster city, and there's so many people that need open space. Thank God that the city council and the city had the foresight to, to save Shell Ridge. They used to say back then, a good steak meal could buy any kind of a vote. And I wish that the Diablo Hills would go back, stay to the nature, stay natural, and be for the people. I go to Heather Farms quite a bit, and they, everybody there, just about is from out of town. We'll bring a lot of revenue if we keep that in natural space, maybe camping, maybe other things. People love Walnut Creek a lot because of Heather Farms. Why not duplicate that? That's well, all I wanted to say, and I, and I'm just, I thought this town had a little bit more class than a development out there, as the development has been going, but I guess it's just turning into another Antioch and another foster city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm going to close public communications and turn to my colleagues and see if they have any questions or comments on the matters that were raised during public communications. Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Many of you who probably have never stepped into the council chambers before here, talking about something that's so near and dear to your heart, and obviously emotional. I think it's emotional for all of us as well, and along with the rest of the country, we're horrified to see what's happening in Ukraine, a sovereign nation that's being attacked by Russia. I'm a fourth-generation descendant from Ukraine, my family's been here a long time, and, and so when I hear about things that are happening, even on the other side of the world, it hits home. But the reason I really wanted to as well speak is that one of our own residents, Tatiana, and I'll, I'll, I'll keep her last name private, she moved here from Ukraine with her husband and son in 2016, and she reached out to me last night. We had a conversation about what was going on, and she would be speaking tonight, except that she just doesn't feel that she's able to express what's really going on in her heart, and asked if I would express her words for her. She's from Gadyak, Ukraine, in the Poltava region. Her sister, father, brother-in-law, aunts and uncles, and all of their families are in Ukraine today. They don't have any military bases or anything strategic in their town, but in order to get to Kiev, tanks are passing through that region. Many have been stopped, but more are coming. The neighboring town of Otrika has been destroyed, which is on the way to a nearby university. There is nothing left of that town. Last night, Tatiana's family had to hide in their basement three times, and called her with the lights off so Russian soldiers couldn't see them. They said that today, Russian soldiers fired at local people. They don't know who's dead, and nor how many. Tatiana was too emotional to share her story tonight, and I'm honored to share it for her. She's sitting in the chamber tonight, right over there. If Walnut Creek residents, or anyone, would like to help the people of Ukraine keep their independence, there are credible nonprofits that are helping the people in Ukraine on the Facebook page, Help Ukraine. Go to Help Ukraine, and we can help them. Again, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. I just want to echo, obviously, I think Councilmember Wilk spoke on behalf of the entire council, that we condemn in the strongest terms the action that, the unprovoked and unjustified actions by the Russian government. We stand with the people of Ukraine, and we fervently hope and pray that this conflict is resolved quickly and in a peaceful manner, because the images we're seeing on television and the stories you're telling us are heartbreaking, and that shouldn't happen to, to any sovereign country, anywhere in the world. Thank you for coming tonight. We have some other items, if there are no, no other council members that wish to make comments. Councilmember Darling.
I think I just want to say that you're all in our prayers, and your whole country is in our prayers.
Okay, then we'll move on to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests, closed session announcements, we'll go to Mr. Mattis.
Thank you, Mayor, there were, there was no closed session this evening, and there were, there are no closed session announcements.
Thank you. City manager reports, Mr. Buckshai.
I do not have an update this evening.
We're moving right along. City council member reports on activities, council member assignments, and various activities and upcoming events. Would any of my colleagues like to lead us off? All right, Councilmember Haskew.
Good evening, and truly, my heart goes with you, too. I have some, some ordinary news, and some happy news, and some just news. The, the rebound committee is meeting weekly now, and we're looking at what we've learned from the emergency measures we took to support our downtown, and how we can adopt that information going forward on a more permanent basis. We're looking at what Walnut Creek will look like from, for the next five to ten years. I also am on the Accessible Transportation Fourth Task Force, and we received guiding principles and, and voted them in, and we're also negotiated a funding agreement with Contra Costa County for a million four hundred thousand dollars to support the implementation of making it a one-seat ride for all our seniors and our disabled people and our veterans. It's going to be a large task, because there are lots of things to put together, but a lot of people are dedicated to making it happen. I also attended a CCTA meeting where we voted to reprogram, and I love this word, savings that were made over the last couple of years, and we're using that about 680, excuse me, I didn't write the amount down, to, to help pay for the rest of the 680 State Route Four improvements, and to pay for Innovate 680, both of which impact Walnut Creek residences, residents, and other county-related projects. There was a finance committee meeting, I'm going to save the coming attractions for the actual report, and I want to, again, with my heart, because it broke my heart to see it, how powerful the exhibition is at the Bedford Gallery. Forced to Flee is about people who have left their homes, and it's the artwork that came from this, and it literally broke, brought me to tears. On a happier note, last night, many of us attended the speaker series with Mo Rocca, the comedian, actor, and news reporter, and I also want to emphasize that the Headliner Series, sponsored by Diablo Regional Arts, had a spectacular concert last Friday night. Brian Stokes Mitchell, who was the person who sang from his balcony in New York City to all the people, The Impossible Dream, and it was amazing, his talent is great. The reason I'm mentioning both of these is, there are tickets still available, and if you want to participate and see any of these things, we have an amazing lineup, so please check the LeShur Theater ticket office and see what you'd like to see. I'm going to forego my traffic report, because I think we're all just focused on other things tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Haskew. Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. How timely the Forced to Flee exhibit is as well, I mean, they curate that a year in advance, and it was so timely and amazing. I sit on the Board of Directors for County Connection, and there will be the Public Transportation Conference in Washington DC, March 13th through 16th, that I'll be attending. In addition to important information about the future of public transit and for our community, we'll be meeting with legislators to discuss the all-important grant funding for our system as well. We met regarding, on a different topic, on the committee with Councilmember Haskew and I, on Downtown Next, and we'll be hearing about that in the weeks ahead, about how we will be envisioning the future of downtown Walnut Creek, and how it will look with outdoor dining, so stay tuned for that. As we heard from one of the speakers, I did have Saturday's Farmers Market office hours at Shadlands on Saturday. We don't usually have anything out there, and I was asked to go out there, since there were some timely issues that were coming on. It's interesting, because there are much more localized issues that people are bringing there, that are focused more on the eastern side of town, so that was interesting, interesting to hear some of those. And lastly, I participated in a rally for United with Ukraine and Against the War in San Ramon. I know there was also a rally in Walnut Creek on Sunday, and as we heard from the speakers tonight, this is very important to many, many people in our community, and, and I'm glad that we were all able to listen to them. And that's my comments.
Terrific. Councilmember Darling.
I'll keep this short tonight. So I sit on the So I sit on the MCE board, and we had a report from them on what they had done here in our community, and they've issued in the last year two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in energy efficiency rebates and electrification rebates, and they have another two hundred thousand reserved for new projects. They've announced a number of other things that they're doing in other areas, including the Pittsburgh School District now has battery storage so that, along with their solar, that they don't lose energy during power safety shut offs. So there's lots of good things coming out of MCE, and I think we're looking forward to a lot more as we move forward with our Sustainability Action Plan. Chamber board, the other thing I want to talk about is I got an opportunity to do a ride-along with Walnut Creek PD the other night. We have done a number of things and heard about different issues downtown, and I just really wanted to see how it was going. I really appreciated the police generously allowing me to ride along, see what they were doing, and what I saw were officers that were very intent on providing the level of service that we hear in Walnut Creek expect. You know, it's something where we all value the ability, if you have a false alarm on your burglar alarm, or you have loud kids partying down the street, to have the ability to call somebody and have them respond. And I really appreciated the increased visibility downtown. I got to see how the, it was way past my bedtime, and so we got to drive around and see what happens at midnight in downtown Walnut Creek. And I, I know it was a short, a slow night, and I said that in front of the dispatchers, and they all started knocking on wood, but, you know, I think the actions that the police department have taken have really made a, a good, safe downtown. Doesn't mean that stuff can't still happen, but I really appreciate the chief and all of his people and the time that they gave me and the tour that they gave me. I appreciated it.
Thank you, Councilmember Darling. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm going to start by, with a large number of thank yous this evening. Last week, the members of the Board of Directors and staff of the League of California Cities visited Walnut Creek for our February board meeting. I have the honor this year of serving as president of that organization, and I really want to thank Walnut Creek staff and my colleagues here on the dais for how welcome you made the group feel. Public Works staff was putting out cones and barricades in front of one of the hotels because of buses. County Connection provided buses in the evening on Thursday so that the group could get downtown to dinner and see a bit of the town. And my colleagues helped to give tours to our guests of downtown and historic sites, public art. The Walnut Creek TV staff did a special presentation, you know, the aerial drone footage, which was great to kick off the meeting. And of course, last but not least, the Leshar Center for the Arts staff, because our meetings, rather than being in a hotel, were actually held on the stage of the Hoffman Theater, which is the large theater in the Leshar Center. And we crammed sixty people around tables for two days, and everyone's hospitality was incredible, so thank you so very much for that. Work continues on negotiations with Toyota Walnut Creek. Not easy, but Councilmember Darling and I are having interesting conversations with them. Last week was the February meeting of the Golden Rain Foundation Board, and I serve as liaison from the council to that. Brought them up to speed on the community survey results and some other items, but it was most interesting to hear their discussion related to concerns about wildfires that could occur around those hills and the mitigation work that they're doing, not only in seeking another exit route, which, as I've explained to them, would go through unincorporated areas, but perhaps we can support the advocacy that they're going to have to do through Consolidated Fire District and with supervisors regarding that. And also heard a report on their efforts to create their own water reclamation facility, which would allow them to keep the golf course better watered in case of a drought, which would allow the golf course to serve as a fire break and a protected area in case people need to evacuate. Much more to happen and going on. Both of them are very expensive projects. The, one of the things that the Board of Directors of CalCities discussed last week was the one point two trillion dollar bipartisan infrastructure law, which was passed by Congress and signed by Joe Biden last November. About fifty billion dollars in infrastructure monies are expected to come to the state of California, but they're not coming automatically to each of our communities. Instead, they're in multiple pots of money related to clean water, storm water, drought, roads, bridges, accessibility. And so we're having to work hard to figure out how we're all going to get the relevant pots of money that we all deserve and so desperately need, and I wanted to thank our Associate Public Works Director and City Engineer. He gave me forty minutes of his time last week to help me understand the issues that we're having to try to navigate through that grant process, and I passed all of that in his notes on to the leadership at CalCities, and I think it will get all the way to the National League of Cities, which we will be visiting with in Washington, DC, not this coming week, but in two weeks. It is the Annual Congressional Cities Conference. I think those conversations will be recovery, COVID, but also the issues that are occurring in Ukraine will be top of mind as we talk with those leaders, and I look forward to those conversations. And on that, I want to thank the members of the community who were here speaking earlier. The best thing you can do is keep talking about what's happening and informing people because it is, there's, there's a lot of noise, but not necessarily all the time a lot of correct information. So I thank the community members that were here to give us that. I know they've gone home, but I appreciate that. And lastly, I would just like to mention, did your, was your name Adina?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to ask if you're going to stay maybe till the break, that maybe one of our staff members could explain to you that that piece of property is not in Walnut Creek, the city, it is unincorporated, so it's being, all the land use questions are coming in front of the county. So maybe they can give you some background information so you can take your comments also to the County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you to all my colleagues for all you're doing for the city and the residents. I did attend the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you for reminding me that. Councilmember Haskew, we'll be talking about that later, so I want to elaborate on that. I also welcomed the new commissioners, many, most of, all of them were here tonight, took the oath of office and, and made their comments, and thanked them not only for their service, but told them about kind of one of my cherished memories is serving as a planning commissioner and a transportation commissioner before having the privilege of serving the city in this role and that, that we couldn't operate, we couldn't do what we do without, without their help and their service, and encouraged them to use their committee secretaries, all of whom were there to welcome them as a resource, and also to reach out to their, their fellow colleagues as resources as well, and do some ride-alongs and learn about how the commissions work. On the twenty-fourth, I serve on the Recycle Smart Board along with Mayor Protem Silva. We had a board meeting. We received a clean audit report of the agency's finances, which was good news, not unexpected, but still good news. We had a presentation by Mount Diablo Resource Recovery and Annual Recycling Update. Mount Diablo Resource Recovery does the recycling processing, not the solid waste processing, but the recycling processing for all agency members, including Walnut Creek. We had a, we received a report on AB 1276, which was a new law requiring that single-use foodware accessories, such as forks, knives, plastic forks, knives, and spoons, only be provided upon request. And the reason I'm mentioning it is because the city will need to amend its ordinance to assume enforcement responsibility for that. And I believe we already, I know we already have an ordinance banning plastic bags and polystyrene, and agency staff thought we would just need to amend that ordinance to, to deal with the foodware accessories. Mayor Protem Silva mentioned the, the League of Cities Board Meeting and our roles as tour guides, and I just wanted, it was a pleasure to serve as it, and so thank you for the opportunity. And the feedback I got from elected officials from throughout the state was, what a special place you have here, what a beautiful city, how do we do this, how do we do that, and how do you, and it was all positive and a lot of compliments, so that was nice to hear. I attended the mayor commission chair meeting and got an update from the various commission chairs and vice chairs. The highlights were the PROS Commission took action to rename Lancaster Park Remembrance Park. That's a park that's in the Park Mead neighborhood, and there are three young people there who lost their lives and are, are acknowledged in that park, Andrew King, Miles Hall, and Aisha Hoardley. There's also dedicated bricks there, so that'll now be known, or in the future will be known as Remembrance Park. The Planning Commission gave an update on some of the projects they're working on, including the Oakmont Project, Citrus Place, and a restaurant proposed to go into the former Scott's Restaurant location. Transportation talked about Neighborhood Streets update. The Youth Leadership Commission was discussing in connection with their policy objective of a seat at the table, starting with a youth commissioner on the chief's advisory board. I believe that will be implemented in short order here. And then finally, just today, I, along with, with the help of Kathy Hemonway, who's the Executive Director of Walnut Creek Downtown, and Colette Hannah, who's the Economic Development Manager, have continued meeting with business owners and property owners in downtown Walnut Creek. I'll meet with anyone who wants to talk to me. You get, you get the mayor's ear, and it was, it was, it's helpful exchange. Councilmember Wilk joined me on one of the conversations and to continue the dialogue, to let them know that we're a business-friendly environment. We want to see them succeed because then we succeed, and so want to keep that dialogue going and, and good relations going with our business community. And that, too, is my report, so we will move on to consideration items. Next on the agenda is a consideration item entitled Fiscal Year... Okay, we moved things around, I think. Is Fiscal Year 2022 Second Quarter Budget Update in Consideration of Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget? At this time, I invite staff to provide the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and councilmembers. I'm Katie Bruner, Budget Manager, and I will be providing an overview of our Fiscal Year 22 Second Quarter Budget Update this evening. So this evening, staff is recommending that your council adopt the resolution, increasing appropriations across multiple funds as recommended by the Finance Committee. But first, I will touch and do an update on the General Fund. So at the end of the second quarter, the General Fund has better-than-anticipated sales tax revenues and some projected expenditure savings. A two million dollar increased appropriation is recommended due to the receipt of the shuttered venue operators grant received by the Arts and Recreation Department, and at this point, we are projecting a contribution to unassigned fund balance. So as of December 31st, revenues were forty-four percent of budget and expenditures forty-five percent of budget. The recommended budget in this, on this slide includes the two million dollars in appropriation in both revenue and expenditures for the shuttered venue operators grant. Revenue projections are primarily based on increased sales tax based upon sales tax receipts from the July to September 2021 quarter, and these are based upon input from the city's sales tax consultant. Expenditure projections at this update are based only upon salary savings due to vacancies that have been achieved within the first six months of the fiscal year. So these projections result in a projected contribution to fund balance of two point three million dollars compared to a balanced budget at budget adoption. The city currently has three hundred and seventy-one and a half full-time equivalent FTE positions, which includes both regular and limited-duration employees. The, this FTE count includes the five new police officer positions your council authorized through fiscal year twenty-three, 2023, on December 1st in response to the organized retail theft in Broadway Plaza. There are currently over sixty FTE vacant positions throughout the city, which results in a vacancy rate of sixteen and a half percent. Historically, the city's vacancy rate has been seven to eight percent. So six and a half additional limited-duration positions have been added during the fiscal year to continue to meet operational needs. Limited-duration positions are time-limited, typically project-based, and/or intended to meet short-term needs, and all of these positions will be funded through existing salary savings, and the need to continue those positions into the next fiscal year will be evaluated as this fiscal year comes to the close. So throughout the year, staff apply for grants, and so far, we've received eight grants this fiscal year, which does help reduce the financial, financial costs on the General Fund. These range from the two million dollar shuttered venue operators grant to entitlement grants through, that other departments receive. Other grants have been applied for but not yet awarded, and so we will continue to report on grants received throughout these budget updates. Next, I'll touch on other funds. Budget, other funds are generally on track as of the end of the second quarter, and we are also recommending increased appropriations in various funds, which I will discuss in further detail. But first, I'll touch on the Parking Fund. The Downtown Parking and Enhancement Fund is projecting slightly lower revenues and expenditures compared to budget. While parking demand is increasing, parking enforcement revenue is lower. However, expenditure savings due to staffing vacancies and lower ridership on the downtown Routes Four and Five. So despite lower projected revenues, a surplus of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is projected at year-end. Staff is also recommending increasing appropriation in the following funds. These funds are special revenue funds or internal service funds, the monies of which received in these funds are restricted for specific projects or uses. All expenditures and will be offset by existing available fund balance. So we're recommending eighty-five thousand dollars in the General Plan Update Fund for continued work on the housing element. One hundred thousand dollars in the Park and Lou Fund for a technical correction to the capital budget. Five hundred thousand dollars in the Vehicle Replacement Fund for recently approved and planned vehicle purchases, and then fifty thousand dollars in the Leshar Endowment Fund, which is related to an, an additional award from the Leshar Foundation. So to conclude, the General Fund is projecting increased revenue compared to budget as well as projected expenditure savings. A two point three million dollars contribution to fund balance is projected at this time. Two million dollars in revenue and expenditure appropriation is recommended due to the receipt of the shuttered venues operator, operators grant. Six and a half limited-duration positions to backfill current vacancies are being reported. The city has received multiple grants to date, offsetting the financial impact to the General Fund. The Parking Fund budget is on track, and seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in increased appropriations across multiple other funds is being recommended. And so again, this evening, we are recommending that council adopt the resolution, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget to increase appropriations across the various funds as recommended by the Finance Committee. And so that concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Nice job, Ms. Bruner. Any questions of staff? Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think everything is good news, but there might be some clarification necessary where it says that our revenues after the second quarter, which includes the holiday period, are at forty-four percent of budget. Have we actually, do, do those revenues reflect the sales tax revenues that we receive in the holidays?
No, so, so the sales tax revenues as of this report, and I have to look at my...
They run a few months in arrears, right?
They do. So we will receive the December, the sales tax payments generated in December. Actually, we just received them in February, and then we will receive the analysis of the full quarter's worth of data in March. So, so the projections generated at this point are really only reflective of the first quarter of sales tax activity.
I think that's pretty good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that. Any other questions of staff? Okay, then we're going to open this up for public comment. If any member of the public wishes to provide comments on this budget item, please use the raise hand feature, press star nine if you're connected by audio. Only as a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks, and the Zoom feed will cut off automatically at two minutes. I would invite anyone in the chamber that would like to make a public comment to please come up to the lectern, and I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll go to Zoom. And I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll go to Zoom.
Yes, we have one hand raised on Zoom. Barbara Guinness.
Hello, this is Barbara Guinness. I had one question on the, there was a slide that talked about increased appropriations, and it was $100,000 to the In Lou Parkland Fund. Said it was a technical correction. Can we know what the technical correction was or not?
So we've received your comment, Ms. Guinness, and we'll, we can ask staff that. Did you have any other comments?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No additional hands are raised.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. And then a question of staff in terms of the Parkland fee. Can you, what was the technical correction that was made there?
So when your council approved the capital budget for the Fiscal Year 22, 23, you allocated $100,000 from the Park, for project budgets that would have used the Park and Lou Fund. The appropriation transferring the Park and Lou Funds to the capital budget was $100,000 short, so we're making that correction at this point in time. So you approved the project and the funding level for the project, but the actual transfer, the appropriation for the transfer from the Park and Lou Fund to the capital budget was not included.
And those were just for the projects that were in the capital budget?
Correct, and for those projects that are authorized, are eligible for use of the Park and Lou Funds.
Okay.
Just to continue clarification, and that was reflected on our staff report that we had.
Correct.
As I remember reading it, it just wasn't clarified in detail on the slide.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any more council discussions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve and adopt the resolution amending the Fiscal Year 22 budget to, to increase appropriations across various funds as shown in attachment to, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
And I will second that.
That's great. Ms. Martinez, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Francois.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we, yeah, we can, we'll take a five-minute recess now, and we'll be back at, oh, 7:35. It's an eight-minute recess. Welcome back to the March 1st, 2022 City Council Meeting. We're moving on to our public hearing item. It's an ordinance, a consideration of ordinance of the City Council to adopt Title IV, Chapter 15 of the Walnut Creek Municipal Code to prohibit individuals from harassing, intimidating, or obstructing persons seeking access to reproductive health care facility and excessive noise within 100 feet of an entrance to a reproductive health care facility. We will get a staff report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Mattis.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we are, at the council's request, back before you this evening to present for your consideration, buffer zone ordinance. This follows the council's prior consideration of the options available to it. This evening, the staff report would be, will be presented by Ally Wolf, who's one of the Assistant City Attorneys here. And Ally, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor Francois, Mayor Potem Silva, and Councilmembers. Just waiting for the PowerPoint to get up.
There tends to be a little bit of a delay. Usually not this long of a delay, but we're working on it.
At the January 18th council meeting, council received a presentation from the city attorney providing an overview of issues related to access of the Planned Parenthood facility in Walnut Creek. Information provided included reports that from January 1, 2020, to, to today, the city has received 43 calls for service for protest-related incidents at Planned Parenthood, including obstruction of walkways and the driveway, harassment, filming patients, aggressive behavior, yelling, use of bullhorns, and physical altercations. The city also received public comments at the October council meetings, the council meeting November 16th and January 18th. Comments were made both in favor and against the adoption of a Planned Parenthood, a buffer zone ordinance. Those who spoke in favor of the ordinance described their experiences with protesters in front of Planned Parenthood, including protesters blocking the sidewalk with chairs and refusing to move out of the way to allow people to pass, observations of harassment and intimidation by protesters to patients and those accompanying patients into the facilities, protesters entering the Planned Parenthood parking lot to approach patients, the use of bullhorns and megaphones to harass those trying to enter the facility, blocking the use of sidewalks, causing people to hesitate to turn into the driveway, obstruction of the Planned Parenthood driveway, and protesters videotaping those entering the Planned Parenthood facility and scanning car license plates. The city attorney also discussed existing laws, both state laws and city ordinances, that the city can enforce. These included Penal Code Section 423.2, which is the California Freedom of Access to Clinic and Church Entrances Act, assault, battery, obstruction of sidewalks, as well as business trespass laws. The city, the city attorney also provided an overview of controlling cases, controlling case law related to the adoption of buffer zone. The Supreme Court and the Ninth Circuit have both upheld a number of buffer zone laws. The city county, the city attorney referenced cases such as Schenck v. Pro Choice, Hill v. Colorado, Hoi v. City of Oakland, and McCullin v. Coakley. Ultimately, what was explained to council was that any buffer zone ordinance adopted must be a content-neutral, time, place, and manner restriction that is narrowly tailored to serve a significant government interest. Council was also presented with a number of alternative measures that may be put in place. Staff proposed the construction of fencing and gate in front of the Planned Parenthood facility, which was found not to be feasible as it did not allow, it did not address the access to, issues related to accessing the Planned Parenthood facility. Staff also proposed increased private security at Planned Parenthood, which at this time, Planned Parenthood has not agreed to provide additional private security in addition to this private security they already provide. Another alternative measure proposed was increase of police patrols in the area at Planned Parenthood. At this time, the police department has increased downtown Walnut Creek patrols, which includes the area of the, of Planned Parenthood. Following the presentation to council, council requested the draft and presentation of a buffer zone ordinance for further consideration. The buffer zone ordinance presented to council today is, limits the ability to block access, harass, intimidate, or make excessive noise around reproductive health care facilities. It is drafted in line with Supreme Court decisions in Hill and McCullin, and the Ninth Circuit decision in Hoi v. City of Oakland. It's in line with the upheld Colorado and Oakland buffer zones, as well as ordinances adopted in the cities of San Francisco and Napa. The ordinance allows for unimpeded access to reproductive health care facilities, but it also allows for continued opportunities for demonstrations and peaceful, peaceable assemblies. Facilities that qualify under the ordinance include reproductive health care facilities that are licensed under the California Health and Safety Code, as well as clinics that provide medical, surgical, counseling, referral, or informational services related to the human reproductive system. Facilities do not qualify if they are owned or operated by licensed hospitals. The ordinance drafted is a content-neutral, time, place, and manner restriction. It applies from one hour before to one hour after facility business hours, and the restrictions in the ordinance avoid the negative effects of harassment, intimidation, obstruction of access to the facility, as well as excessive noise around the facilities. They, they do so without targeting the message or topic of speech. The ordinance is also narrowly tailored. It's narrowly tailored to facilitate access to reproductive health care facilities. It prohibits within a radius of 100 feet around the entrances of reproductive health care facilities, approaching without consent within eight feet of any person or occupied vehicle seeking to enter or exit the facility for the purpose of harassing or intimidating that person or vehicle occupant. An eight feet is defined as the, is measured from the extension of the body. Harass and intimidate are both defined within the ordinance. Harass is defined as to engage in a course of conduct directed at a person that alarm, seriously distresses, torments, or terrorizes a person. It does not include quiet, consensual conversations. And, and the term harassment also provides a number of examples for what would qualify as harassing behavior. This includes approaching a person once that person is indicated they do not want to be approached or engage in conversation, following a person... following a person if that conduct is intended or likely to cause a person to fear bodily harm to themselves or others, intentionally touching or causing physical contact with a person, using violent or threatening gestures towards that person. And intimidate is defined as to make a true threat directed to a person or group with the intent of placing them in fear of bodily harm or death. The ordinance also prohibits excessive noise within 100 feet of the entrance to reproductive health care facilities. And this is, is done so to protect the standard of care and, and health and welfare of patients. Excessive noise is defined as any noise louder than a conversation in a restaurant, which is equivalent to any noise exceeding 60 decibels. And a decibel is, it's a unit to measure the intensity of a sound. The ordinance also prohibits obstructing access or exit from any entrance to a building or driveway at a reproductive health care facility. Obstruct is also defined under the ordinance, and it's defined to mean rendering ingress or egress or enter or exit from the facility as unreasonably difficult or hazardous. This includes, but it's not, it's not limited to intentionally blocking or interfering with the safe or free passage of an individual. Again, a number of examples are provided for what would qualify as obstruction. This includes intentionally causing a pedestrian to take evasive action to avoid physical contact, or placing signs, tables, chairs, on the sidewalk so that the flow of pedestrian traffic is restricted or obstructed. The way in which this ordinance is drafted provides ample alternative means for communication. This means that an individual is, is allowed to be in the 100-foot radius around a reproductive health care facility, and, and they're allowed to engage in conversations with another person. However, the conversations, an individual may not approach within eight feet if those conversations are not consensual. So there, there are a number of, of restrictions put in place that continue to allow open communication within the buffer zone area. So what I'm showing you now are some examples on the screen of, on the left side, you'll see a picture of a red dot which indicate, those are two red dots which indicate the entrances to the Planned Parenthood reproductive health care facility. And the blue zone is the 100-foot radius around those entrances. So you'll see that it includes the parking lot in the facility, as well as it includes part of the sidewalk and, and pub, public sidewalk and public street along Oakland Boulevard. On the right side, that picture, there are a number of blue circles. And those indicate if a person is standing in the 100-foot radius, that is an eight-foot buffer zone around the person. And so that buffer zone will actually follow that person within 100 feet of an entrance to the facility. So you can see a person standing on the sidewalk and the buffer zone around them. If they now enter in to the parking lot of the facility, that buffer zone will still follow them. There are also enforcement mechanisms under the ordinance. And the enforcement sections establish the criteria to include criminal and civil enforcement. Criminal enforcement establishes that any violation of the ordinance is a criminal misdemeanor. And this would be prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office, who has reviewed this, this buffer zone ordinance. Civil enforcement authorizes an aggrieved person to bring a private action in civil court. And this would include monetary damages up to not less than $1,000. It would also include attorneys' fees and court costs. The ordinance also provides law enforcement with the authority to order dispersals of gatherings in front of the Planned Parenthood facility. For those gatherings that continue to violate the sections of the ordinance after a verbal warning. Should council choose not to take action on this ordinance tonight, the police department and city staff will continue to monitor the situation and respond to incidents at Planned Parenthood under existing laws, as have previously been noted tonight. The recommended action after accepting public testimony, and if the council desires to proceed with the ordinance, then waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending the Walnut Creek Municipal Code Section, Chapter, Chapter 15 under Title IV, to prohibit individuals from harassing, intimidating, or obstructing persons seeking access to a reproductive health care facility, and prohibit excessive noise within 100 feet of an entrance to a reproductive health care facility. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Any, does council have any questions of Ms. Wolf at this time? Councilmember Darling.
I said, wanted, wanted to talk a little bit about the idea of excessive noise. Amplified sound, is that already prohibited by one of the existing ordinances?
So the existing city nuisance ordinance does have nuisance related to noise that, that could include, that does include certain types of amplified sound. This specific ordinance would clearly establish a restriction of sound within the 100-foot zone around reproductive health care facilities and would allow law enforcement to more clearly enforce those restrictions.
So it's, it's not necessarily a brand-new restriction, but it's just more clear that this is an area where noise will be, for the sake of the patients and the, the facility, this is the level of noise that's expect, you know, can't go above this level?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Potem Silva.
I'm going to continue on that. So you described it as 60 decibels. So that is a metro, meter, metric, measure of this, of sound. The, but then you equated that to normal conversation in a restaurant. Does that mean normal conversation if the mayor and I were sitting across the table from each other? Or is it those diners where everybody's screaming orders across the kitchen?
If you could actually. I do have an indication of sort of what, what sound, what decibels sound like. And for example, OSHA has set specific meters and what sound, which decibel equates to what type of sound. So for your specific question.
So we have to be sure not to amplify it through your microphone.
Yes. So, so 60 decibels, in, in these charts, you'll see, there's one chart that equates 60 decibels to the sound of conversation in a restaurant, which could be three feet, which depends on the area and the sound in that area. So 60 decibels could sound different in various noise areas. I, I can't actually see what's on the screen, but I can tell you.
60 feet at three feet in a restaurant?
Yes, exactly.
So this is not screaming across a diner?
Correct.
The, so eight-foot protective zone, so to speak. So if I'm standing 12 feet from someone, so let's say between me and the clerk, in order for me to.
Yes. Yes. So, so the intent is that the individuals are still able to have consensual conversations, but the shouting and, and amplified sound that could impact a, a patient's ability to safely access reproductive health care services is protected.
Can you go back to the aerial views? So the 100-foot circles are from the entrances, the eight-foot circles. At least two of those are actually on private property. This does not allow people to enter the private property of Planned Parenthood, does it?
It does not. So private property laws would still be in place. However, the ordinance does apply on private property. So if there were a violation on private property, in addition to a potential trespass ordinance, this police department could also enforce this ordinance.
So essentially, there's another perimeter being drawn, which is the private property line. If you step into there, you've now created even more potential problems. Thank you so much, Ally.
Councilmember Haskins.
Thank you very much. You said the eight foot is a body extension. Does that mean that people have, can get closer to me because I have really short arms? What is a body extension?
It means that eight feet is measured from an extension of the body. So if I'm approaching a person that, that, and I reach out to hand something to that person, eight feet is measured from my hand to, to whatever is extending from their body. So if they're standing hands still, it would be eight feet from the extension of my hand.
Thank you.
Good. And Ally, on the buffer zone radiance, radius slide, if you can blow that one up a little bit. So, so just so we're all clear here, the small blue circles reflect the hypothetical person, an eight-feet, an eight-foot buffer around that person within the 100-foot applicability zone.
Yes.
And in that eight-foot space, no non-consensual conversations can be had. Outside that eight-foot space, non-consensual conversations can continue to be had.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
But, but within the volumes specified, yes, within the, the ordinance. And it can't be excessive noise, so it can't exceed 60 decibels, even with non-consensual conversations.
That is accurate.
Okay. And then you'd mentioned the district attorney had reviewed the ordinance. Did her staff identify any issues or concerns with its language or with enforcement of it?
So, so the district attorney staff who reviewed it did not identify concerns with enforcement of the ordinance.
Okay. And then at the last, in the, the staff report for the last meeting, there was a reference to a recent amendment to state law that I believe prohibits videotaping or photographing people entering or leaving a reproductive health care clinic. And that took effect fairly recently. Can you summarize that for us?
Yes, I have the language with me. So the, so Penal Code 423.2 makes it a crime to intentionally videotape, film, photograph, or record a person within 100 feet of a reproductive health services facility, or to distribute such material to intimidate them from becoming or remaining a reproductive health services patient, provider, or assistant.
So even if the videotape or photograph is not distributed, it's still a crime to videotape or photograph someone within 100 feet of a reproductive health care facility?
Yes, if that, if it is found that that videotaping is intentional.
Okay. Sure. Mayor Potem Silva.
I apologize, I forgot this question. So signs, tables, and chairs cannot be on a sidewalk. Can they be on the street?
No, they cannot.
So how much time is adequate time to move a chair and not be considered obstructing the pathway? Or is it just not on the sidewalk?
So the, the city's municipal code ordinance that is already in place restricts any kind of placement of a, or obstructing the, the sidewalk generally. So placing a chair or a table in the middle of a sidewalk would, would be a violation of that. And then, under this ordinance, obstructing and obstructing and preventing an individual from being able to pass, including having a chair in that, in the sidewalk, would be a violation of the ordinance. The specific time really depends on if it is obstructing that individual from passing. So I, I don't have a specific time, but if an individual is not able to pass through, then that would be, that would be an issue.
Mayor Potem, if I may, and, and the chief may want to join in on this too. Typically, there would be some kind of warning. If law enforcement is, is brought out, they may advise the person to move the, move the materials first. And then if that does not achieve compliance at that point, there may be further enforcement action that would take place. But I defer to the chief if he wants to add any more to that.
Good evening. Jamie Knox, Police Chief. It's actually a misdemeanor in the penal code to intentionally block a sidewalk. So we have an ordinance, but it's also a violation of the penal code to do so. I believe it's 647(c).
And what about placing chairs, tables, or even signs like A-frame signs or leaning signs against a car on the streets where they might be obstructing visibility?
Yeah, if it's in the public right-of-way on a roadway, it's illegal.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? No? Well, go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. We'll go ahead and open at the public comment period. This would be the time for people on Zoom to, to express their interest in speaking. We're going to call you after the people in the chamber, but to express your interest by raising your hand or pressing star nine if you're connected by audio only to let us know that you'd like to make a comment. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments have been posted to the city's website and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Group spokespersons are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We will accept in-person public comments prior to any remote public comments. And so I'd welcome any members of the public that would like to address the council to please come to the lectern. And if you'd like to, you could line up just alongside of the sidewall here.
Good evening. How many minutes do I have?
Two minutes, sir.
Two minutes. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Okay. I have a lot to say, so I'll talk, I'll try to talk fast. Such deceptive language. It alleges that my Christian friends and I are terrorists, protesters, harassing, threatening, intimidating, blocking, obstructing, causing hazards. It's amazing that there's no videos or arrests that have been made. There isn't. There's none. Okay. My name is Edward, and I'm part of Love Life. We're a group of sidewalk counselors that are on the sidewalks reaching out to these young women. Reach out to the pregnant women who are there to end the lives of their little ones. I was a fireman for 31 years in a large and busy metropolitan city. I have seen my share of death and mayhem in my career. What's more bothersome to me is seeing scared young women about to end the lives, their babies' lives, and Planned Parenthood capitalizes on that fear. Let's be honest, Planned Parenthood is in the business of making money. We are there to offer these ladies help in keeping their unborn babies. We believe women have a right to be made aware that help is avail, available for them. We let them know that they have options available for them, from diapers, strollers, housing, adoption, whatever they need. If Planned Parenthood really cared about these women and not their profit margin, they shouldn't have a problem with people like me offering to educate them on the help that is available to them. These women are not told that their decision will cause a lifetime of regret, shame, guilt, depression. I know this firsthand from my several family members and friends who made these horrific decisions to murder the little ones inside of them. One of them was a rape survivor who was forced to abort her three-month-old child. She still cries over the precious life she's, that she ended. Again, she was another scared woman who was told that it was best for everyone if she killed her baby, that it was the kindest thing to do. We helped save 14 babies last year on the sidewalk. We helped save 14 babies last year on the sidewalk. Isn't that a good thing?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, sir. We have other speakers, so two minutes per speaker. Next speaker.
Thirty more seconds?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. In 2014, the Supreme Court struck down a Massachusetts law mandating a 35-foot fixed buffer zone around clinics that offer abortion services. In this case, known as McCollin versus Coakley, Supreme Court justices ruled unanimously in a nine-to-zero ruling that the buffer zone infringed on individual First Amendment rights. Justice Roberts concluded that by denying the petitioners the ability to engage in conversation and leafleting on public streets and sidewalks, the law prevents the petitioners from engaging in the exactly, or excuse me, in exactly the transmission of ideas the First Amendment is meant to protect, even within those 35 feet. The court also held that in enacting the law, Massachusetts overlooked other options that could serve the same interests without placing an undue burden on historical avenues of speech and debate. Furthermore, Justice Scalia concluded that a blanket prohibition of speech in areas where only one type of politically charged speech is likely to occur cannot be content neutral. There is strong legal precedence that content-based laws must be examined under strict scrutiny. Justice Alito Jr. wrote a separate opinion concurring in judgment in which he argued that the law's exemption for clinic employees and volunteers constitutes viewpoint discrimination because it silences abortion opponents while allowing clinic workers and supporters to express their views. The message of this ruling by the high courts in McCollin versus Coakley is clear. Abortion clinic buffer zones are unconstitutional. We urge this council to uphold the law of the land and to protect its citizens' First Amendment rights. Creating buffer zones specific to clinic offering abortion services is in violation of the exchange of free speech upon which this country has flourished. Furthermore, it gives clear overt preference to one specific kind of speech, putting the council in a situation of making moral judgments for its citizens. As residents of this municipality, we reject buffer zones at abortion clinics. We have both the United States Constitution and the Supreme Court of the United States of America on our side. Please join the great American tradition of upholding the free exchange of ideas by voting against buffer zones at abortion clinics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and if you would, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening, honorable magistrates. My name is Sophia, and I'm from Brentwood. Your own city agenda report from the city attorney has inaccurate information regarding the incident on June 1, 21. That day, a minor who was serving on the sidewalk was verbally assaulted by an irate man who physically touched him and threatened to harm him. The protesters, as you call us, defended the minor. There were no arrests. As your report says, if this is true, where's the case number and report associated with this? Please read it before you vote. Where is the research as to the foul play reported multiple times at the city council meetings over the past few months? Why is there no evidence in your report of why women are being taken out of the Planned Parenthood in an ambulance due to botched abortions? One woman reported coming to the Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood, being 26 weeks pregnant, and they were going to facilitate her abortion. Where is the investigation when they are supposed to only do abortions up to 17 weeks, six days? Where is the justice for women who are being used and abused by this wicked institution for profit? I want to remind you that your name will be attached to this vote. This will be a permanent record that will show your voters where you stand on defending life, and you will be held accountable to that. This buffer zone will inhibit women from hearing the gospel and finding out about the help available to them. The Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood is sandwiched in between the freeway and a busy street. This is not a quiet environment in which normal conversations can be had. Look at these precious babies here that may not be here had we not seen their moms, met their moms. All of their parents were intending to abort them. These are just a few of the over 3,500 families that have been saved as a result of a consistent Christian witness outside of these abortion centers. It's not harassment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Natalie Hart, and I live in Discovery Bay. I'm going to tell you a story. This is the story of Deborah Liliana Marie Martinez. I found out I was pregnant at six weeks. I had thought in my head of, I am so young. I am not financially stable to have a baby. Am I really, am I really ready for this type of responsibility? I made an appointment at Planned Parenthood to take a pregnancy test. If I was really pregnant, I wanted to see what options I have. Part of me kept thinking that I could not bring a child into this world. I kept to my appointment, and after they confirmed I was pregnant, they gave me two options: prenatal care or abortion. To be honest, I was very torn. I left Planned Parenthood Clinic, and that's when I had met Sophia. She helped shine more light upon the situation. She showed me a picture of what my baby looked like at that point. We talked for a while, and she committed to give me, she committed to give me comfort and support to choose life for this baby. Before that, I was nervous to tell any of my family members that I was pregnant. But after the support I received from Sophia, I had the courage to tell them. Even though I knew the father of my child supported me having the baby, I felt that I wasn't enough to make the decision to keep my baby. It was not until I spoke with Sophia that I felt confident to be a mother. When we left Planned Parenthood that day, I agreed to go to lunch with her the next day. I kept thinking about what my baby looks like. I also could not get past the fact that my baby's due date was my sister's birthday. When I told my sister, she said, "Lil, we got to keep this baby." I met with Sophia and decided to keep the baby before my pregnancy. I felt in many ways that I was just existing, and then I felt like I had purpose.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ed Case, and I'm from Pittsburgh. And I just wanted, when I first got here, the first thing that we did is we stood up. We pledged allegiance to the flag. And then we said we're going to uphold the Constitution. And that's exactly what we're not doing when we're able to stop us from doing what we've, what the Constitution says. We have free speech, and that we can do these things. And not only that, but you know, we pledged allegiance to the flag. And we also, you know, said in God, you know. And then saying in God, well, God hates the shedding of innocent blood. And that's what it is, you know. It's not woman's choice or man's choice. It's the baby in there. God preordained that baby to have life. And so I would just like to ask you, what if your parents decided to take your life that was when you were in the womb? Now, they didn't even get an opportunity or a chance to even experience life. You know, the word in Jeremiah 21:11 says, "For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord." It's plans that are prosperous and not harmless, but plans to give us a hope and a future. Now, what are we doing when we're sitting there and doing these things in these medical facilities, for which we call them? They're not medical facilities, they're death camps. They take the life of babies, and they rip them out limb by limb, limb by limb, or they suck them out. Or they suck them out while the baby's trying to fight away from it. This buffer zone is going to keep us from being able to express love, you know, Christ's love, that we would want to go ahead and help them to where they can make the choice to keep their babies, you know. And this buffer zone right here, I think it's just, it's unconstitutional. It's not right. We have a, man, may God bless you guys. You know, when you go to think about this and you go to judge upon this, really seek the Lord's face. If you are believers, as you say, when you pledge allegiance to God, then ask God, man, what you think, what he thinks you should do. Don't just go on your feelings, please.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Marie from Oakley, California. I would like to ask the council to not take any action at this time because there are three major participants. There is the abortion business, and there is, there are protesters, and there are the biblical Christians who are honestly wanting to help women who are weak, immature, broken-hearted. Now, we cannot stop those who want to have abortion. But we can. We Christians, biblical Christians, are there for those who would like to have other options, spiritual, faith, you know, things. There are other organizations, California Pro-Life Council and Right to Life and American Center for Law. We are like them. And so we are the characteristics of, I read all these events, these incidents. These are not characteristics of biblical Christians. We are meek, gentle, loving Christians. We want to educate. We want to bring people to Christ. That's what our job is. And we want to share this with you too and your families because this is the only hope we have. But the thing is, this is a very, a very serious topic. And you're asking for a buffer zone? So let's say the city hall, we have a lot of serious issues where protesters are there. Should we then ask the government to put buffers on? No. We just tolerate this. We have the law enforcement, and we have other resources to control all these disturbances. But we cannot put a buffer zone so that the people who are intentionally wanting to help will be prevented from helping them. So please do not take any action. Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name's Alex Chalklin. I'm a longtime Walnut Creek resident. Recently bought a house in Pittsburgh, California. And the reason why I'm here is to speak about this buffer zone. Basically, I seen that you guys, you know, seem like you guys have a heart for Ukraine. Well, you know, that's, this is the fallen world that's going around in this. But I want to let you know that you live in Walnut Creek, California, where, you know, you should be proud. And I honestly don't even know how a place like this could even be in your city. I just would like to, you know, enlighten the fact that, you know, you did, you did seem like you have a heart for these people. But really, look in the mirror and honestly know what's going on in your city, in your city, mayor. And I want you to understand that the blood is, the blood is, it's happening. These babies are getting killed. All we want to do is love on folks. Let them know that they have options. I don't know if you have grandbabies or you have family that have little ones, but could you imagine just the horrific things that are going on over there? I know you know where the place is at. You probably drive by there just to see what we're doing. We're going to continue to fight this good fight. And if this man and his officers enforce the law, like they should, but, you know, people are stealing in your town. People are getting away with this. But now you want to enforce this, fighting for babies that can't speak for themselves? Have a heart, please. Understand. It's not about Planned Parenthood giving you guys that money. It's about lives, okay? Please understand that this blood is on you guys. It's no threat, but it's just reality, what's happening, okay? It's genocide. It's human genocide. Babies are dying, and it hurts. It hurts. And I just, I pray, you know, that you guys understand what's happening to this city. You guys are accepting it, and you guys are getting money, whatever, however it works, okay? There's people amongst you that I know truly have a heart. And you guys need to really understand what's going on because this blood is on your hands, mayor. Thank you for the time. God bless you, folks.
Hello. My name is Jenna Simone, and I am a resident of Walnut Creek. And I would like to see our city stand up for Christ, okay? I'm going to be honest. I love Christ. I think He reigns, and I go by His principles. And according to His principles, abortion is not really good, okay? It's not good. We're just trying to educate people according to Christ. America was founded on Christian principles. It really was. When we wrote our Constitution, it was because of the Bible. It really was. We don't want to see that, but it was. And so I'm going to speak for Christ. Christ has a Bible. It's His word. Can we please honor Him? That's all I'm asking. Please. I pray for all of us. As this town, as a citizen of Walnut Creek, and as a Christian. I pray for all of us. Can we respond appropriately unto Him? Give your hearts to Him because I love Him, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Next speaker.
Evening. I'm Brandt Anderson, Walnut Creek. After the October 2020 assaults by the Texas-based security folks that were associated with the protesters, I was one of the people who came to the city council to ask for some action to prevent that kind of incident in the future. And I'm glad to say, you know, that, as you mentioned in the staff report, that criminal charges were brought in that case. And what I wanted to talk to you about enforcement. And I appreciate that you're taking up this ordinance. I do hope you pass it, as it's been presented. Enforcement is critical in a situation like this. Forty-three violations speaks a lot to the willingness of the folks who are protesting to test the limits of what the city will allow. And that's perfectly all right, as long as they eventually understand what the limits are and comply with them. To do that, I think it's really important that the city educate the groups that are organizing the protests to make sure that they understand before it goes into effect what is involved and what the lines are that are drawn as to what they can and can't do. It's also very important that, early on, that enforcement be strictly enforced. You know, obviously, warnings when they're appropriate and other action when it's appropriate to make sure, again, that the organizations and the individuals understand what the lines are, what the limits are as to what they can do and what's not allowed. And just on a separate note, my son is adopted, and he was, his birth mother was referred to us by Planned Parenthood.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is James Cook. I'm from Antioch. And I am a sidewalk counselor down there. We've been coming here for the last, every other Tuesday, giving our input on the general speaking. And tonight, you guys are going to adopt a buffer zone. I know from being down here since last fall that you guys already have made up your mind. I was here when you guys did it in January. We took a very quick recess, less than 10 minutes. You came back. You guys had pre-written statements. You already knew your decision before you heard any of the public. You already knew. You had pre-written statements before you heard anything. Some of the things that we brought to you the last two weeks, last four weeks, has raised some eyebrows because you haven't heard about that. Like, they don't turn the sirens on when the ambulance come to get the wounded women. They specifically say that on the 911 call. Do not turn your lights on. Do not turn your sirens on. That officer, I won't say his name, but he's been down there for the two years I've been down there. He's hired by Planned Parenthood. He has never, never came out to rescue some client from the terrible protesters. He has never, ever done that. Ask him. You were down there, you went down there for three weeks talking to him, Wilk. And he, he has never come out to rescue any of these so-called assaulted clients that are being prevented from access. And the only thing in your, in your, in your, in your law here, it says, and I don't know if I'm saying it right, empirical evidence? That's all the evidence referenced in your law, and that means observed. There is no hard evidence, except for accusations, that people are being, not able to come down there. No one is restricted access to healthcare, especially women in California.
Next speaker.
Hi, Don Blythe from Stockton, California. I sat there just watching the continued effort to make false statements about what the law actually says in order to justify your decision. about what the law actually says in order to justify your decisions. I find it shocking that you continue to misread the law and you are actually proposing in our country that you're going to restrict our free speech to the sound of a restaurant conversation? Where there is a freeway, one of the busiest freeways in California, right on the edge of the building. The, the decimal levels are unbelievable out there without us. And for you to propose that you have a constitutional idea that you're going to limit the loudness of my voice when I'm calling out to someone to be able to call above the sound of that freeway and ask them to come over and talk to me? I look forward to the day when you're going to continue to put the police in a difficult situation with your foolishness that you're proposing here tonight. This is foolish. I, I'm, I'm shocked that what appears to be intelligent, decent human beings would come up with a law in our country to restrict how loud we can be in warning people and talking to them and pleading with them not to go in and kill their children. How dare you? Especially in a time when the Ukrainians are suffering from this kind of abuse right now. So I look forward to the day. And I, I feel bad for the police officers that have to enforce this unconstitutional idea of the loudness of our voice as we reach out to people. Amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Blythe. Are there any other speakers in the chamber that would like to address the counsel on this item? I'm not seeing any, so we'll turn to Zoom. Suzy.
Yes, we do have a couple of speakers. We'll first bring in Robin Papino.
Hi, Robin, are you there? Might have to unmute for us to hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Am I unmuted now? Hello?
Yes, good evening. We can hear you.
I'm so sorry. Okay, good evening. I'm Robin Papino Kuntz and I live in Antioch. I volunteer weekly as a patient escort at that Planned Parenthood in Walnut Creek. As someone who regularly talks to people who come to Planned Parenthood and the friends and family who accompany them, I support the draft ordinance. I believe it would improve safety for everyone involved if the protesters were not allowed to stop cars in the driveway or impede foot traffic on the sidewalks by blocking or partially blocking the sidewalks with fairs and themselves, frequently not moving from their positions. I've said before that I've observed several people who were jogging or walking on the sidewalk and have gone out into the street to avoid the protesters. As you know, the protesters regularly, regularly shout at clients and us or use voice amplification. The owner of the building next door has stopped by to talk with us at least twice and he has said that his staff is bothered by the noise too. I've seen people visibly shaken by being called names and yelled at to dissuade them from access, accessing reproductive health services or accompanying those who were. There was a young woman, I walked to the front door, who told me, "They scare us." Well, thank you for your time and effort. You and the staff have, have spent to improve the health and/or safety of all concerned.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Judith Foley.
Hi, Ms. Foley. If you're on, you might, might have to unmute.
Yeah, um, I'm, I can't get my video on. But anyway, um, can you hear me? Yeah, there I am. Okay.
Good evening.
All right, I've been an escort at Planned Parenthood. And this, according to my understanding, this, this ordinance is not about, uh, whether we, we're debating choice or anti-choice. It's about the safety of people in Walnut Creek when they choose to go to a healthcare facility. And the, the, um, what I've witnessed is science being attached to the utility poles, to the, to the pole for the bus stop. There are two bus stops, one on either side of the street. They pa- they put their signs there. A, um, a protester goes out in the street and waves a sign as, at the traffic going by. Those are the kinds of things. And I have been personally intimidated while trying to access, saying, "I know who you are" by one of the protesters. And, um, does your, do your grandparents or grandchildren know that you're helping to kill babies? Those are the kinds of things that go on. And, um, so if they couldn't be right there by the, um, driveway, if they had to be, um, and they also take up parking spaces that, um, so that the, there isn't enough parking in the facility either. So it's a safety issue with the traffic and, um, and intimidation with the clients that have made up their mind. And, um, they, um, uh, so that's my, I, I agree that just in, just imposing the existing, um, rules and regulations for the street are something that, um, is important. And I wish that the ordinance would go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lori Day.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Welcome. Yes, we can. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am, my name is Lori Day. I live in Livermore. I'm also a Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood escort. I am very pleased to think that this, um, might go through for the protection of the, um, patients that come into the clinic. And, um, I think that, um, it would help with the safety of them being, uh, protesters being out of the driveway and keeping the traffic flow going. So thank you very much for this consideration and I think it is a, a big plus for the clinic.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Next speaker.
Last hand raised on Zoom is Kim West.
Hi there. I'm, uh, Kim West and I am a clinic escort at the Walnut Creek facility. I've been escorting for Planned Parenthood for, um, over 10 years, both in San Francisco and at the Walnut Creek Clinic. Um, and I'm here tonight, as I have been a couple of times, uh, throughout this process to support the buffer zone ordinance in Walnut Creek. I've seen firsthand the intimidation tactics and I would just, rather than reiterate, you know, all the details of what everybody else has expressed this evening, I would just lend my support to what we've seen and what we've experienced. Most importantly, I think, and you guys heard me a couple of weeks ago, um, I was a clinic in San Francisco when the city instituted their buffer zone ordinance. And I saw firsthand how that helped to de-escalate the tensions and the conflict and the strife that was going on out in front of the clinic when people were coming to the clinic to, uh, access healthcare. And so, um, I'm just here again tonight to continue to lend my support for the people that come to the clinic to access their right, um, to safe and effective healthcare and, and concern for their, the needs that they come to the clinic for.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next speaker.
Yes, we did have a couple more hands go up. O.G. Strogatz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm O.G. Strogatz, a resident of Walnut Creek and a volunteer patient escort at our local Planned Parenthood clinic. I offer my thanks to the city council for your responsiveness to the concerns that we've raised regarding the safety and well-being of clinic patients and their drivers. I also wish to thank the city attorney and his staff for the thorough, thoughtful preparation of the ordinance. I urge the city council to unanimously approve the ordinance establishing a protest-free buffer zone around the Planned Parenthood clinic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strogatz. Next speaker.
Allison Aranda.
Hello, are you there?
We're here and we can hear you.
Great. I just wanted to reiterate, um, there were several comments made earlier this evening about the current sound ordinances. And I wanted to inquire of the council, how is the current proposed law different than any sound ordinance that you have on the books right now? And I wanted to reiterate that it is true that the clinic is adjacent to the highway. So does your sound ordinance take into consideration the noise that is put out by the highway? Also, I'm, I apologize, I'm getting a little bit of feedback from another device. But you mentioned also that the trespass laws apply. And I wanted to inquire of the council, how many times have there been calls about trespass and those individuals have been prosecuted and convicted for actually trespassing into the clinic's, uh, parking lot or property? The last thing that I wanted to present to you all was that you cite in your bill or your proposed ordinance that, um, the San Francisco law, the Oakland law, the Hill v. Colorado law and the NAPA ordinance. In all of those instances, how many times have people actually been arrested as a result of those, um, buffer laws being passed? And is there a diminished call to police as a result of the buffer zones being passed in those, um, particular, uh, cities? And the last thing that I want to bring to your attention is that you mentioned about obstructing the sidewalk, obstructing, um, the passability to the clinic. And aren't there current laws on the book that address the issue of obstruction of sidewalks, obstruction of streets? And how many times have the police been called out to this particular location and people have been arrested for obstructing the sidewalk with the laws on the book? In addition, you mentioned 42 times that the police have been called out to the location. We've requested those public records. Why will you not release those to the public to show what law?
Any other speakers on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
I have no additional speakers on Zoom.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period then and, uh, bring it back to the council for any clarifying questions of staff based on the public comments. Mayor Protem Solba.
Thank you. And this is a question for the attorneys. McCullin versus Coakley was cited in one of the comments. And from the Massachusetts 2014 case, I guess that went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. What's, what did this U.S. Supreme Court not like about that law? And how is this ordinance, proposed ordinance different?
Yes, so the McCullin v. Coakley case was heard by the Supreme Court. Um, and what the Supreme Court did in that case was it held that a 35-foot buffer zone, which restricted anyone from being within the 35 feet, um, from the entrance to the facility, it held that as unconstitutional. It talked about how the people needed to be able to have conversations and be, and be heard, uh, within that area. So, so the, the issue in that case, um, has been taken into consideration and the ordinance as drafted has taken into consideration the, um, the holding by the Supreme Court in that case.
So it's 35 feet versus eight feet. This is a much narrower distance.
Correct, yes. And, and in that case, uh, yes, I, that, I'm, we'll leave it there. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for the clarification.
I had a few questions. One, uh, I think is, some are for the attorney and, and one might be for the police chief. There was a comment made that, or maybe the attorney can answer, that no arrests were made. And I thought I recalled from our prior staff report that multiple arrests had been made.
Good evening. My understanding is we've made a few arrests. And when we use the word arrest, it could be a custodial arrest where we actually book somebody. But it can also mean where we give somebody a summons to go to court and file a misdemeanor charge.
Okay.
And my understanding is we had at least three cases where arrests were made.
All right. So even if they weren't technically arrests, the police department had determined that a violation of the law had occurred, issued a citation and referred it to the district attorney, uh, during, district attorney's office for further action?
Yes, and these arrests were not always on the protesters. I believe that one, one of the cases involved a security guard.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then for the, for the attorney, there was also a comment made that the proposed ordinance prefers one type of speech over another. Could you please respond to that?
I'll, I'll go ahead. The, the ordinance does not prefer one type of speech over the other. In fact, the city's history has been that there's been inappropriate activity by protesters on both sides of the issue out there in the past. So the ordinance is intended to apply to all activity that would be covered by the ordinance. We're also very aware that part of the issue that resulted in, in a determination in relation to Oakland's ordinance was that, uh, the evidence was clear that there had been, or at least the evidence and record was that there had been enforcement on one side of the issue, if you will, in relation to one set of protesters as opposed to others. And so the enforcement of this ordinance would be, um, equal across all protesters.
Irrespective of which side the protester, which political point of view they have?
That, that is correct. That's, that is the purpose of the, of the, um, mechanisms that are in this ordinance. So if, if someone, regardless of which position they take, if they attempt to engage in a conversation with somebody as they're entering that and that person indicates to them that they don't want to engage in that conversation, then they need to stay beyond the eight-foot buffer regardless of what position they're trying to advocate.
Okay. And then there were, there were, there were some comments made about the, the excessive noise provision and sort of what the language is and how it would be enforced, given the ambient noise conditions in that area. I wonder if either of you can speak to that issue?
The, um, the, the ordinance is written so that there is a, a standard that can be enforced. Um, we do recognize that any standard that you place is subject to some discretion, if you will, in terms of where you, where you place that standard. But we were mindful of the fact that the, um, the constitutionally protected speech that the courts have recognized is the ability to have a normal conversation in proximity to people. And so the, um, we look to standards that were, that would allow for that to happen, but would also allow a mechanism for the officers to be able to clearly identify when there was a violation. We can all appreciate that, um, as I think from one of the questions from the council this evening, what does a, what does a normal restaurant conversation really mean? That is, that, that can be interpreted by people very differently. Whereas a 60 dB level is something that can be measured and can be identified. The comments that have been made tonight about the ambient noise, the, the facility is close to the 680. We're well aware of that. And that is something that, um, that, uh, we could look at further if the council wishes us to. If you were to introduce the ordinance this evening and ask for additional information with regards, so that we can do that. We do have to keep in mind that there are different times of day that are out there. And there are different levels of activity on the freeway. And so the, the noise, uh, and there are different levels of activity on the freeway, and so the noise circumstances can change over time.
Okay, those were all my questions for now. Any other questions for my colleagues? No? Councilmember Wilk, would you like to start?
Thank you, and again, thank, thank everyone that came out tonight, as well as spoke over Zoom. And as I had mentioned at the January meeting, this is about people's safety, primarily women, since women are the primary patients who use reproductive health clinics for healthcare services. I've seen videos of harassment and their escorts. They're part of the public record. We've seen this over the course of the correspondence over the last year. I was also at the Planned Parenthood location several times, as one of the speakers mentioned, and I was able to carry on a normal conversation during the day, freeway was behind us, with another person a few feet away. Wasn't a problem to be heard. People have the constitutional right to seek health, health services and treatments which include reproductive health services. And protesters also have a constitutionally protected right to protest. The difference, as I mentioned before, is that one group is trying to exercise their constitutional right without creating interference, and the other group is trying to exercise their constitutional right to protest while creating interference and trying to prevent the first group from exercising theirs. Freedom of speech is not an absolute. We've heard that since grade school. One does not have the right to yell "fire" in a crowded theater, and one doesn't have the right to threaten people. Freedom of speech is extremely important, and this ordinance does not infringe on freedom of speech. It provides a buffer zone so that both parties are able to exercise their constitutional rights.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. Councilmember Haskew.
Thank you all also for coming. I, like, and the parent of an adopted child, I know how precious the children can be and how much joy that child has given us. I'm also sitting here thinking that protest is a bad choice of words because I'm very clear that you're passionate about protecting a form of life. The problem, I guess, that we're trying to address is not that you don't have the right to say that. The problem is other people have rights to make choices about their lives as well. So, what we have is an intersection, as I said before, of two rights. And as I said before, and I don't think anybody heard me when I said it, if you're being really careful and caring of the people that you are trying to address, then you would not be getting all this feedback about you've crossed lines. If you want to do your job, and if the woman who said having the buffer zone actually made conversation more available and people more opening, open to listening, then I say that you should be as much in favor of this as the perceived other side. Therefore, I, I am, I am really, I am really frustrated because, because you think we haven't heard, but I have heard. I understand the other side. I also understand the other side that wants the reproductive freedom. So, if, if we hadn't had all the problems, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Haskew. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody that's participated in this over the months. I was struck tonight listening to the folks with Ukrainian roots about how fragile democracy can be, and we all here have taken an oath to uphold the Constitution. We had our arts commissioners take an oath to uphold the Constitution, and that Constitution includes rights that are precious to us all: freedom of religion, freedom of the press, freedom to assemble, freedom of speech, and includes the privacy right that's been recognized for the last 50 years, which says that women have the ability to control their reproductive rights, their reproductive freedom. So, we are here not looking to impose on anybody's rights, but to take those rights and put them together in a way that is safe for our community. There's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent you guys from having quiet, caring conversations with women that are accessing Planned Parenthood. This is content neutral. It covers everybody. It's about the safety and helping bring order to a situation that the number of calls for service from our police department indicates has gotten out of hand. So, I, I recognize that everybody is frustrated they're not getting everything they want, but that is the beauty of our democracy, is we work together, and we take our rights and other people's rights, and we respect one another, and that's what we're doing here, is we're finding a way to restore safety in this area.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to all who've participated in the conversation that we've had over the recent months. First of all, those are my notes that I'm going to speak from. This is not a prepared speech, and I didn't come in, but, but there, but that was your comment, that we all had prepared speeches. So, I just want you all.
No, we, the public comment period is closed.
So, from a few notes based on tonight's conversation and observations made in the field, like my fellow colleagues. This is about creating a safe space for both sides to be able to advocate, but also to be able to access. Both rights are equal. There's not one over the other. This is content neutral. It is time, manner, and place specific, so if Planned Parenthood isn't open, then it doesn't, the law isn't in force or wouldn't be in force. But it does guarantee those who are seeking to access reproductive healthcare services unimpedable access without fear of being harassed or obstructed. But it also, at the same time, gives those who want to advocate the opportunity to do so in a manner that is defined under the law as quiet, consensual, and caring conversation. The, what it also does is establishes guidelines where everyone can understand where the zone is, what the distances are, when it can occur, when it can't, and so it is easier to know when one's, one has stepped out of bounds, and it could be on either side. I really suggest that signs need to come out of the street. They need to come off the sidewalk. The chairs need to come off the sidewalk because that is visually harassing. The person on the other side of the street doesn't want to approach it for any reason at all. And I'm, so that's, I am going to support this ordinance for, because I do believe it's best for all parties.
Well, thank you to my colleagues. I want to thank our city attorney, Mr. Mattis, Ms. Wolf, for providing what I thought was, was fair, impartial, objective legal advice and analysis of the case law. I want to thank the police department for their enforcement of the laws over the past two years and beyond, and I want to thank all the speakers for coming tonight who weighed in on this issue. I considered everything that was presented to me before rendering a decision. I do come down on the side that this buffer ordinance is needed for the public safety reasons that were stated. I disagree with some of the comments that were made that were weighing in on a moral issue. I don't believe that's what we're doing at all. What we're trying to do is balance two competing rights and do it in a way that's safe for everyone involved. I think that clearer lines need to be drawn here, and this ordinance does that. I come back to that McCullin decision. I'm an attorney. I read the cases, as did our attorneys, and in a 9-0 decision, which you rarely see from our Supreme Court, they found fault with the 35-foot ordinance, but what came before that was an eight-foot ordinance exactly like this. And people testified and said, "The eight-foot ordinance was fine. I could still communicate. I could still talk to people in a normal conversational tone." I could, one woman testified that she talked to 100 people, and she said, "The problem was when Massachusetts restricted it further and kept people further away from exercising their free speech rights." So, to me, that this law, exactly what the Supreme Court observed in McCullin, was legal with the eight-foot buffer zone that preceded it. And I do think, we've, we've had a lot of comments leading up to this, questioning whether this was necessary. I think the staff report does a good job, this one and the one from January, on 43 calls for service over a two-year period, and documented instances of verbal altercations, physical altercations, assaults, trespass, obstruction of the sidewalk and street, and use of amplified and megaphones. All of those, I, and the, we've heard about instances of, of folks being photographed and videotaped, and it may have been before the amendment to the law took place, but now, hopefully, it's really clear that that's against the law, to photograph or videotape someone within 100 feet of a reproductive clinic. So, that, that is our state law, and that, the public comment is, is closed, Mr. Blythe. So, now it's my, my turn. I gave you your two minutes. I do think that it's, this law is written in a way that's content neutral and narrowly tailored, consistent with existing law. I think that's proven by the McCullin case again. The alternative measures, did you consider, did the city consider alternative measures? And I absolutely think that that has been done here, that to the extent that there were alternatives, they either have been implemented or determined to not be effective or infeasible. And I think that's proven by, we've increased police presence in that area previously, and it may have worked as a minor deterrent in some cases, but we've still had 43 calls for service over that two years of time. So, increased police presence didn't resolve this issue. In fact, it taxed our resources even more. We've reached out to Planned Parenthood. They already have a security guard. I don't, I personally don't think it's reasonable that they have to hire additional security guard. They already hired a security guard, but we reached out to them to, to gauge their interest in doing that, and they're not interested in doing that. We talked with them about putting in a fence or a gate, and I think that they're, they're correct, that that would not really help the problem because it would create a bottleneck and make, maybe, may even make the problem worse. So, with factoring all that in, I, I too am in support of, of the proposed buffer ordinance and would recommend that we waive the first reading and move forward with introducing this ordinance. And so, with that, I would entertain a motion.
And Mayor Al will move to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance, amending the Walnut Creek Municipal Code to add Chapter 15 to access reproductive healthcare facilities of Title IV Public Welfare Morals and Conduct to prohibit individuals from harassing, intimidating, or obstructing persons seeking access to a reproductive healthcare facility, and prohibit excessive noise within 100 feet of an entrance to a reproductive healthcare facility.
And I will second that.
Ms. Martinez, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're moving on then. I would like to give the opportunity for anyone that didn't get a chance to address this during public communications earlier, given our 30-minute time limit. So, again, for items that are not on the agenda, if you'd like to address at council on an item that's not on the agenda, you can raise your hand if on Zoom or press star nine. Obviously, if you're in the chamber, you can come to the lectern for items not on the Do we have any speakers for items that are not on the agenda? For an item that's not on the agenda, Mr. Cook? Okay.
All right. And I just want to say thank you. There's no personal feelings towards any of you, just trying to get my point across. My, my, my comment today is, a while back, you guys presented something about removing abandoned cars in the city, correct? And there was money allowed for that program, and in that program, I believe the assessment was about three cars a year that was removed from being abandoned. And now, I, I could be wrong. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a lot of money for three cars a year. So, I'm just kind of asking, where did all that money go in that program if it was only about three cars a year? It was zero to three a year, I believe what it said. So, my, my question is, as a concerned citizen, it's like, where did all that money go for three cars a year?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other speakers on Zoom, Ms. Martinez?
No speakers on Zoom.
Okay, so then we will close public communications.
Are we going to give an answer?
Yes, and I'm not sure if staff was prepared on that one. I know we had a staff report on that issue recently.
Yeah, we did, and I can speak to that briefly. Effectively, that was a vote to allow the, the fees to be continued, it'll go to the voters, I believe, in the June primary, and effectively, it's, it's region-wide, it's throughout the county, and so it is divvied up amongst the 19 cities and the unincorporated area, and we do have a relatively low number of abandoned vehicles compared to other cities. So, this is really more for the general region, more benefit in other areas than there is directly to Walnut Creek.
Just real quick, would there be announcements to the public about that?
We did discuss some of that previously, and then really, it's up to the board of supervisors, but it is outlined in the documents about how many vehicles are in each respective area and how much money is allocated accordingly.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned.